There was an article in the paper. You know, Holly brought a copy, I brought a copy. I don't know to what extent we need to talk about this, but my concern first and foremost is making sure that council's okay. And so I figured it'd be a good opportunity to... Everybody okay?
I haven't read it yet.
Please pass the article when you're done.
Do we get your comment?
Yeah!
Good. I don't think Marcia and Joan have seen it.
For the record, for the record, my wife Janie may be the least okay, only because I was credited with being a longtime volunteer with Hope. And my wife took offense because she's the one who's prepared all those meals up for all these years. I'm simply her backup, right? I'm her driver at times. She's done all the hard work. I just show up once in a while.
They didn't mean there is a volunteer?
She's one of the greatest volunteers and she's been...
Well, could you please have put in the record that Janie Waters?
She is one of...she's an All-Star soup agent. And we have been doing that for years.
So is Joan Parker. They just didn't put that in there.
Can I say for the record as well?
Yeah, please.
There was a tour that was referenced in this. It's only one of a whole series of events in which I was involved last...or this week, actually. So in making an absolute full confession, the real important meeting, most important meeting on Monday, wasn't that tour. It was the secret meeting you and I attended. That's true. So the Brian, the mayor and I attended a secret meeting, or not so, attended a meeting with business owners at the grocery, Safeway Grocery Store, you know, the former Safeway Grocery Store Plaza or whatever, you know. We met with business owners who are seriously concerned about the lack of traffic. Interestingly, I didn't, I was invited. I was asked when I got there, "Well, why are you here?" And I said, "Well, I'm invited." Same reason I was there on Monday, by the way, because I got invited. What I didn't know was who all was going to show up. Didn't know that the mayor was also invited. And actually, he did a great job of listening and responding to those concerns. So you did much better job than I would have in responding to the concerns. So, but that was probably the bigger meeting on Monday that I attended. And then I attended a meeting last night.
An event?
I attended a meeting last night that probably falls into the category of secret meeting.
Yeah.
It was on a topic at least as sinister, at least as sinister as homelessness and how we respond to homeless populations. It was on the topic of parent empowerment and training. It was about the PASO program, right? So it was also in Ward Three, right? And three council members showed up in a private residence to talk about parent training. Imagine that. Just so happens it was in the home of John Creighton, home of the former school board president, current school board president was there. And three council members showed up.
I was invited.
I'm pretty certain we were breaking some law. Except that we get invited to these all the time, right? It's our job to show up and listen and learn. In this case, I was a co-host, so, and I was asked to make the ask, right? At the end of the meeting, because it was also a fundraiser.
Are you talking about the firehouse?
I'm talking about for PASO. And in my view, the only way we're going to ultimately achieve our goal, right, of 500 kids who are currently not getting any high-quality early, you know, preschool education, if we only have 50 seats available and we have 500 kids, we have 450 kids, we're not going to be able to place them. The only way we're going to serve those kids is with parents, right, stepping up in the community supporting it. So I was there, as were two of my council colleagues last night, to support that concept and to make the case that it's worth funding by the community, not by the city, although there may at some point be a conversation. But for the record, for the observer and for the Times Call, if I broke one law this week, I broke a bunch, because I showed up when I was invited to do my job, to listen to this community and advocate on behalf of what I think is absolutely consistent with the vision and the goals of this council and in the interest of the community. So that, I'm done.
May I ask a question? Is, are those meetings on your city, on your Outlook calendar?
No, I don't know if they are or not, honestly.
We were all invited to the event last night.
I don't mean coming from Maria. I mean, would you individually put those when you get those on your Outlook calendar?
I typically do. I put them on my calendar. Whether or not they always show up on your calendar, the city calendar, I don't know.
Right. The city calendar is a different one. I'm just thinking, you each have Outlook calendars individually. If they're there, I'm just, I always think of solutions and that's what I was...
I always put every meeting on my Outlook calendar and they're all, I always put the meeting description as public unless it's something like a doctor's appointment that's nobody's business.
And for full transparency, we had another secret meeting with the governor.
That was not secret.
But nobody else was invited on the council.
I'm offended now.
Yes.
But there are only two of us there. It's okay. And me. No, I know.
And you.
You know, count her.
I know. You said you all were invited.
To the one last night.
Who did it come from?
Came from, I think I got it from John Creighton, but it came over our city email. So anybody reading our email would know.
It was from John.
Yeah. I would like to make a statement or I'll make a statement.
Let the record reflect that Bonnie Finley has arrived from the Elton John concert on no sleep.
No sleep whatsoever. And it was an awesome concert. It really was. When I ran for city council, I ran, one of my things was civility. I've worked really hard to be civil and to listen to my fellow council members with the respect they deserve and in every circumstance try to bring us all together as a group. I was upset about the firehouse thing because I had to learn about it from a citizen rather than a fellow council member or city staff member. This is less than a mile from my house. My neighbors were upset and no one thought perhaps they ought to let me know what was going on. This is what upset me. I don't think you guys meant to have a secret meeting. I told the reporters I didn't think that there was any nefarious thing going on, but there was a meeting that I didn't know about or my neighbors didn't know about in their ward about a public building that they're quite fond of. So that made me angry and I'm still angry. And I feel disrespected that someone didn't think to pick up the phone and say, "Hey, did you know we're thinking about this?" Or, "Hey, we should have a conversation, a public conversation about homeless shelters. What do you think?" Nobody did that. Instead, I find out a bunch of folks were invited into my ward, which is no big deal, but the people who live around there are not happy. So I'm not happy and I feel very disrespected that someone didn't let me know so that I could at least field those questions in a proper way.
Bonnie, who do you feel disrespected by, by us?
All of you. If you, I saw all of you that day. You could have said, "Hey, we were in your ward. Did you know they're thinking about, you know, some people are thinking about doing this?" Nobody told, I had to hear about this from a citizen.
Well, we did bring it up at the retreat.
I didn't hear it.
I'm sorry you were sitting right next to me.
I know, I was.
I mentioned it, that we were looking at the firehouse.
We did.
And this isn't, and I'm sorry if you feel that way. This isn't a council initiative though, actually. It's a, it's a public initiative that came from that meeting on homelessness. And so when we are at that homeless thing, the way home, we're not there as council members. We're there as private citizens.
And every time I go in, I say that.
You are always a council member. You are always a council member no matter where you go and you need to act like that.
Well, that's not entirely true because I asked Sandy Seder, that was the very first thing I asked her. And in my orientation with Eugene, I said, "Do I have to give up as a private citizen what I would do anyway?"
I'm not asking you to give it up. I'm asking you to be transparent about it.
And I think, and I think that, on one hand, so here's, here's, I think, where the, keep in mind that I view this council as a family and we're at the dinner table, at the breakfast table and the world, and the world is watching. Hey, John Frye, Scott Converse, how you doing? The, I think that, on one hand, I know I've worked with all of you long enough to know that you've got big hearts and strong minds and I think that everybody on council, and I think that the, and I certainly agree that you maintain and hold your, your individual right to be involved in all kinds of things, both as a private person and as a city council person.
Of course.
I think that the reason why this was such a flashpoint was because at holding the council member position, right, and being involved as a private citizen, if we're looking, and now granted, even if that firehouse is not going to be a homeless shelter.
Right. There's no decision made about anything.
Correct. But we as a body, you know, including the people who attended that, we are the ones that would be making the decision to use the firehouse, a public building, for a homeless shelter. So you can't, on one hand, you are a private individual, but should that, should you take a tour and should you go, "This would make a great homeless shelter." I mean, what happens? Do you vote on it? Does everybody recuse themselves? But it's me and Bonnie's decision, or, sorry, and Aaron's decision? Aaron was also feeling very slighted, right, Aaron?
Yes, I wasn't invited.
So, so I mean, I think that, I think that that's the flashpoint. And I think that, and I got a call from Jake Marcing last night and what I told him was, he's a, I mean, he's a private citizen. He's a lot, he's not subject to sunshine laws. He can do whatever he wants.
Yes, but he also is the aide to Mike.
And I understand and I wish that he would have told everyone that, that we would be invited, but, but at the end of the day, if he wants and his group wants to, I mean, like right now, we have what? Faith Baptists and Journey, faith-based organizations providing navigation services. I think that's a phenomenal model. I think the flashpoint was that there was people who had personal interests, who hold positions of power in our community, the decision makers, looking at a public building, the city manager. It was a perfect storm and...
That's true. I agree.
And it was like, dope! And then of course, and as I told Harold, I don't even get birthday gifts. I don't even get Christmas gifts for one simple reason. Everyone who knows me knows I don't like a surprise. And my biggest point to the paper was, and I told this to Dr. Waters and I've shared this with a few of you, was the only thing, after, after they were asking the questions, I said, "Look, but the one thing that if I see in the paper where I will never talk to a reporter from your organization again is if I do not think there was any nefarious or even intent or knowledge by any of the council."
Do I say the same thing?
And they showed up, right? So...
I just want to make, Bonnie, the last thing I want to do is offend you. I didn't know who was, honestly, I didn't know who was invited Monday. I didn't know who was invited last night. I didn't know who was invited to my meeting on Monday.
Last night was not the same thing.
Well, my point is, my point is, the intent, I wouldn't want to offend you ever, but, but I didn't know I was offending anybody by showing, by responding to it, any more than I would, would last night or on Monday. But just so you understand, it wasn't, there was nothing intended specifically about you or any, anybody else. It was just showing up to...
Not just me, but that community as a whole.
Well, I'm just saying, I responded...
It just happens to be my community.
I responded to that invitation, to last night's invitation, to a Monday invitation just this week. I spent Thursday afternoon with a bunch of kids at Columbine. I spent Monday and Tuesday morning with kids at...
That's not the same thing.
Well, the point is, well, last night and Monday were the same thing. They were invitations by members of the community to come and learn something.
That's not the same thing.
Well, then we just view that differently.
That's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is, is people who are going to make a decision about a public building that taxpayer, taxpayers pay for and not letting the community know. And the thing is, I don't understand why the city staff didn't know. If this all came through public email, how did you not know that they were all invited?
Marcia's going to be the next councilperson, but I do think it's important, I've had a conversation with Harold, I do think it's important since the question was asked.
So I apologize.
But let Harold, add, respond, you're going to be next, I promise. Want to answer that question?
Yeah, so, as I said, at some point Jake approached me and said, "Can I get a tour of a facility?" And he mentioned that it was a way home and service center. And I said, "You can, but we're not anywhere near the point of disposing of that facility." And laid the timelines out. I think I even mentioned that when everyone was there. I even said zoning issues are going to be an issue on this and there's, there's a process we need to go through. The, and I said, "You need to get with Scott Snyder." I asked Maria to say, "You need to get with Scott." Set it up. Scott Snyder arranged it. I actually got the invitation from Scott. I did not get it from Jake. Scott was just making me aware of the fact that he did it. I was going to, okay, what's this about? The only person that I knew that was in attendance by email was Tim because Jake specifically mentioned that in his email where he said the Times confirmed in this. We didn't see all the invites in this.
Did they not come through the city email?
I don't, I don't know where they, I don't know how they came through. I mean, I honestly don't know how they...
Well, so as, as a person who is not mad, I think I would like to say that there's a background that, that hasn't really been made clear. There was, I think the group came out of the discussion of, you know, the discussion on homelessness that was held, sponsored by the city and the faith-based community. Some of us attended meetings, not as members of the council, but as individuals who volunteer every chance they get. Some of us did a little networking on behalf of the group, which is operating as under, under Hope and its 501(c)(3) license in, what do you call it? Certification, registration. And because we have dropped in on those meetings from time to time without any coordination and without any discussion of city business, we're on the mailing list. So the people on the mailing list were all invited. I don't think there was any coordination about who was going to show up. I showed up 15 minutes later than everybody else because that's...
Yeah, you saved them by that.
Although, although in all fairness, in all fairness, I have seen Harold say, "You've got to go." Meaning, you know, I've been told to leave meeting.
I mean, and to be frank with everyone, and Bonnie had, there've been four people there. I mean, it's happened in our office, I think, where I've said, "I need people to leave because we've got too many in this conversation." And so that's there, but I've got other things.
Well, you know, I, when, I really wasn't finished.
Sorry.
That's okay. I, I don't even think it was a meeting. It was a tour. I had, because he was hanging around chatting with the, with the firefighters, I had about a three-minute conversation with Ken Carl and, you know, he's, I said, "Look, did anything happen?" And he said, "You know, we can't really, we can't really, you know, have indigents in this neighborhood right now, probably, but it'd be a great place to put young women with, with families," you know, "that were transients." And that was all, that was the total meeting aspect of the thing. It was, it was a tour, at least as far as I saw.
And, and we did, Jake did, first of all, this, this group, the way home, it didn't even have a title. It was just keeping meeting together, discussing. Started when I was taking care of my husband and after he passed, I was asked if I would like to go and I said, "Yes, but you have to understand if there's a vote on this, I have to recuse myself." And I made that very clear. I'm here as an individual. And then there was a public meeting held at a church that was advertised and Karen Roney was there. This isn't a, and we've been out in the public saying, "We're thinking about this. What do you think?" So there's a lot of support. This is not, this is actually part of our work plan to garner information. And I, I respect Bonnie's thing about she tried to be very ethical, but I'm sorry, when I went to an HOA meeting all by myself, I got dragged through the mud for that two, two summers ago. So let's, let's don't pat ourselves on the back about being ethical and righteous and...
Was that what this night?
No, that's my point though, that it was make very clear that you don't go to public meetings or you don't have meetings at that time without a staff member there, without... So this is part of our work plan and I'm there as a resident. Do not form this meeting and I will recuse myself from the vote. And I made that very clear from the very beginning. So I have no, I'm fine.
So I, and I don't, and John, I don't, again, I just want to reiterate that I'm glad the paper picked it up twice. And when I talked to Scott Converse, I said it as well, which is, I don't think anyone here was acting intentionally. And I don't think, and Bonnie also was quite clear that nobody here was acting intentionally to have a meeting or even a tour with three or more council members. So as I'm listing though, I think part of the problem, so I think that, so again, that was that meeting, the Sacred Heart of Longmont.
Right.
Homeless, homeless meeting. I don't know if it was posted or not, but the, but I was...
Was it in August?
Yeah. I was asked, I don't remember the pastor's name, but someone, he asked me, "Mayor, what would you have me do?" Now, my response, if you recall, was, you know, "It doesn't matter. You, as a man of faith and a leader of your flock, if you feel that your religious faith dictates that you proceed in this manner, it doesn't matter what I think. Follow your faith is my advice." So in that very article today, again, mentioned Faith Baptists and Journey, four, four days, one group, and three days the next. That is, you know, private faith-based organizations. And again, I wholeheartedly support anybody's efforts to participate on an individual level in a, you know, private matter. I think where, where, you know, again, this is objective, no blame, you know, an autopsy of what happened, so to speak. I think that what we need to do is just be aware that if there is a potential decision, meaning using city resources, either gifting or selling a city building, or even if we're looking in our private capacity as at a facility that would require zoning changes, we need to be aware that that is a public issue and that's kind of the intersection of where our private and our public, our private interests and our public responsibilities intersect. And so can we all say that if we are, if we find ourselves with multiple council people and it's, and it's an option presented before us that we might have to be acting in our capacity, can we say, yeah, we should just all say that, yeah, we recognize that that needs to be a public discussion and bring it back to council?
Sure. Of course. It's, you know, this is, I think everyone would have automatically been aware of that, whether there were any other council meetings on the invite list or, or attendance. If the building weren't slated to be in use for two more years before there was any question of disposal of the building, and you're also talking about a group that has, what, $6,000 in the bank or actually in a, in a, in a fund at the Longmont Foundation, right? So there's no question of, of this organization as it is constituted today. Push up, y'all!
The angels are coming.
Doing anything like that. And, and if, you know, if the meeting had a purpose, I would say, you know, they're scouting out real estate around the city to try to come up with a future action plan that would, you know, long, to talk about things so they could raise money, but that they're far, far from anything substantive other than coordinating among the faith community, which is work going, going fairly well as, as far as I understand.
Just a last, kind of, at the end of the day, that's nothing to do with Monday or for Hope or the way home. At the, at the end of the day, having a plan for the use of that building before it becomes an eyesore is in the city's interest, right? What happened at Lashley Street Station before it became a wonderful community center was an eyesore. It was a rat's nest. I mean, when I was showing it, it would have been used, I guess, to store stuff and it was covered with graffiti, it had been vandalized. The last thing that community needs is for us to not be clear on what's the best and highest use of that property when the time comes that our firefighters are moving to somewhere else. So getting smart early. By the way, this, this was the second, not the first. I was approached by another group right after the bond election with the question, "What's the city's intent with, with the fire station?" I said, "I don't know." I asked Harold, "When would, when would we even know?" And he said, "It's a long way off." And that was my response and the, and the group went a different direction. But I, but there are a number of groups out there that are looking for real estate that are going to be curious.
Well, like, I was just going to say, like I said, I was just going, I was just going to simply say, my concern first and foremost was the relationship. It's been a good year, so I want to maintain that relationship. I also want to make sure that public trust is maintained in this council and I want to make sure that as we move forward, we can just focus on a work plan and move forward. That's it. And so I figured it'd be a good idea to just mention at least before we launch into, you know, discussion slash presentation by city manager on...
What to stop?
What to stop!
So, if I can say a couple of things. One, and this is to Bonnie, I just literally saw it as a tour.
Right.
I mean, I've done that at the old printer space. We had folks who wanted to come in and see the Carnegie Library. Nowhere in my mind was anything happening soon because I don't know. Brian mentioned something to me and I go, "I don't even know if we may still need it for some type of public safety purpose." I just don't know what's out there. And so, so you know, that's how I saw it. And I should have probably said, "Hey, this is happening."
You know where I live, Harold. It's less than a mile from my house.
I know, but I was just saying, for me, it was not something imminent. It was, "Hey, somebody wants to see it." I, in my mind...
That community's very upset.
Right. And, and I made the comment, somebody asked me yesterday and I said, "That is an active community and if this moves forward, it's not gonna, it's, there's gonna be a pretty big battle because..."
The optics on it were horrible. They were absolutely horrible.
And I'm also pointing out, this is how democracy works. We have three ward representatives. Bonnie is representing the people in her ward, as well you should. And people are actively pursuing their interests on an individual level, as well you should. And the, the, the paper is making sure that we have these discussions and I joked that I used to say the eighth member of council, but with Scott and John, I guess we have an eighth and ninth member of council. But it's all good. It's okay.
Well, I would like to say something too about this. I mean, it is, I think, a very difficult situation when you get into an office that is elected and you really, I mean, Bonnie rightly says, "We have to keep ethical standards." And understanding those standards is difficult, but we also do have the right to be private citizens. So there are many cases in which this is borderline and that's why we have to refuse ourselves when we get into difficult or questionable situations. But there are, going through the last year of the inclusionary housing, I never met with a developer. I never met with a developer. And there's a reason I didn't, because this is a huge thing with very expensive stuff, but I did meet with them publicly. I never met with any real estate people, but I did meet with them publicly. And I think there are many, many instances where we are having private meetings without realizing that these can be potential, either things that we have to recuse ourselves from or things that are really not ethical. I mean, you can have a conversation with the developer, I talked to two guys yesterday, but you cannot start getting into things that have to do with zoning or where your vote is going to mean money in their pocket. And so we do this all the time, but we have to actually be accountable to ourselves. But... But I, I assumed because I don't think you attended that meeting on homelessness. So I assumed you weren't, you know, that interested, but you and I go to the meetings with the, because you have led the initiative.
I'm not interested in homelessness and I'm the one who brought the veterans' village here.
No, no, I'm, I, no Bonnie, that's not what I'm implying. You are, but I assumed you were not interested in this initiative, because you're already doing a lot. And we all went to tour the home, the tiny, the, the home that they brought in, which was really, really wonderful. This was just like that. Nobody got into discussions there about stuff going before city council. We were there to tour a home, just like we were there to see, look at this space.
It's a public building.
Yes, that is the difference. And, uh, that should have, I think. I was not thinking about that and I should have.
And I, I was asked flat up and it's all, I mean, I'm not Eugene, right? But I was asked, so do you think that the council member violated the sunshine laws? My answer was no, right? So just as a reminder.
That's not what this is about.
Yeah, but no, I know, but what I'm, I know, but just, just as a reminder, going back to Polly's comments. If there's one of us, we're okay. If there's two of us, we're okay. You can lock the door. You can, you can turn off the lights and whisper around a candle. And, but if there's three of us, it has to be an open meeting. Meaning the door has to be open and if a member of the public shows up and they want to have a seat. You know, if you're, if, if, if we're having breakfast, Polly, me and Marcia at Perkins. And, and someone walks out, I'm gonna name the, the, the member of the community, but anybody in the community, if they walk up and want to join us, except for another council member. And they sit down, um, they're allowed to listen and, and at least listen, if not participate in their conversation. If that goes from three to four, that's where the problem is, because then it has to be posted with twenty-four hours notice. And so if we find ourselves, now granted, a chance meeting, right, is not, even that a chance meeting is not part of, it's not a violation, right? So, but just, so we're all aware, just, I mean, as we move forward, just be aware of that, because that's where people are gonna go. Ah! So, yeah.
How many, I, I have probably a dozen this month invitations to business before and after hours with the Chamber. I don't, I don't go, I don't have a business in town. I don't. Maybe I should go. How many, do, how many people, I don't even know who goes to those.
I've gone, I've gone a couple.
Two times, maybe twice.
It would probably be.
That's by invitation. That wouldn't be a chance meeting.
That, 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 again, so a chance, but then again, a chance meeting for who? So I think, I mean, you guys were all invited. You didn't know that was a chance meeting for you. Now, it wasn't a chance meeting for Jake Marsing, who knew that he was inviting you all, right? But the chance, or, or Scott Cook at the Chamber, if he invites us all to a before-after hours. That's not a chance meeting from his perspective, but they aren't the ones that are.
And I think they're on our calendar, aren't they?
Yes.
Those are sent to us.
Yeah, so, so.
Those posted meetings?
So we, I don't know. We should probably post them though.
They are.
Those are posted.
Are they posted?
They are posted.
What about the Ansel Adams reception at the museum? Posted there?
Right.
That's posted.
We all went to that, did we?
I, I would enable.
I've seen, I've seen his work in them.
See, I'm not certain what's posted and what's not.
I have all these invitations. I didn't even see the notice.
So, so question, do we post if it's on our calendar?
Your calendar is posted.
Your mayor council calendar.
No, but it's, no, is it posted as in like made public or is it officially posted on the board?
Officially posted.
Okay, alright.
Alright, so, but here's the thing.
You're welcome.
Boom, okay.
Officially posted.
But what's caught in that calendar is what is either run through Maria or Michelle. Where they send those invitations out.
Or where.
Or.
Somebody, or somebody from our organization will say, hey, I'd like to invite council to you. And those come to somebody in our office. We forward them and they add those. But if we don't catch it some way in our net. It wouldn't be forwarded, it wouldn't be added.
But the public has.
So like the Safeway meeting?
They don't have access.
They can, they can look at it on the website.
Yeah.
It's in the council packet.
No, it wasn't, because that didn't come in through Maria or through another staff, so we, we don't see this. So like, I mean, I, I literally put notes going, okay, I need to find out about this and this, because those are things we just, we don't know about.
So, you know, had Safeway, and again, this has happened before, right? Had I shown up to that Safeway meeting, um, I walk in, I see Dr. Waters, I sit down next to him. And then had Marcia shown up and sat down next to me, I would have, you know, made sure.
One of us has to leave.
No, no, the door's open.
Oh.
The, the door is unlocked. It's an open meeting, right? Now, if Polly would have shown up. Correct. No, but it's also posted.
But this is posted.
Yeah. No, but then if Polly shows up, now there's four, I would have said, okay, there's four of us, I'm gonna, hey, Teresa McPhail? There's four of us, we can't be here. I'm gonna step out, but I'll call you later. You know, you know, that, that's how you remedy the situation. But again, I understand that Bonnie, you're, uh, the, the, the spark, you know, the emotion from Bonnie, the call to me. And I also, after I got a call from the Times call, I did place a call to Scott Converse, you know, because he's also a member of the media. And I want to stay in good graces with the media. And so the, uh, the, all this happened as a result of, like I said, perfect storm of. The, the reality is, I thought it was gonna be way worse. You know, I called a company and like, uh-oh, you know, just say no. This is what's happening. What happened? And so, um, at the end of the day, the article says, there was a tour. There were three there, almost four. And that there's a private organization in town who is thinking about building a homeless shelter. They wanted to tour the facility. They asked the city manager. Bonnie wasn't invited. It is what it is. It's now, I mean, the, the democratic system worked. Nobody was, had any ill intent. Nobody was trying to hide anything. It's in the public domain. And as we move forward, we will discuss these things. And if it touches on public business, we will dialogue, debate, discuss. And if it doesn't, like Sacred Heart, Faith Baptist or Journey, I mean, good day to you and thank you for your service. That's how I look at it.
Well, and just for, uh, you know, transparency, that, uh, the way Home is looking at several buildings. And, and properties and it, it isn't just about the firehouse. It's beginning to look at buildings, at places. That's what we, that's what they do.
And if I can say one thing that, that Brian said that everybody needs to be cognizant of. The zoning's gonna, what I saw is gonna be an issue.
Of course.
Where it is.
Of course.
Because, um, not meaning zoning, I mean, there may have to be a zone change.
Right.
And, and there are issues that, I forgot who it was afterwards, I go, I had a meeting with Marcia on something else. And she said something and I go, there may be conflict issues now. Because of this. And.
It was just first step.
And so those are things that I think, as Brian indicated, people have to be careful with.
Of course.
Because if, if there's a, a zone change and it, and it becomes quasi-judicial. To be honest, I mean, what you're gonna hear from me is.
And then we go to the public.
Four people involved in this and it's quasi-judicial and, and there may be an issue.
There's two related questions in for me.
Yeah.
One is, I'd asked you, you and I have talked about, in fact, you provided for me a long list of city assets. It's like, whoa, that's, that's too long a list, right? Of those, of that whole long list, which are buildings or property that we own. That someone else might have an interest in, right? The reason for that question wasn't this. It was what's coming with an opportunity zone and wanting to be informed about where public-private partnerships might exist, what property we own where. But this conversation, you know, like, we haven't talked more about that since you showed me the initial list and it was like, oh, it's not what I need. But it, but it does seem to be that this conversation raises my sense of urgency about having, not that whole list. I don't know, need to know where all the parks are, right? But what's the, what are the, what's the land or buildings we're not currently utilizing, right? That we don't have functions in right now. Or that are, that we leased to somebody in some way. From the creation station to the, to the Carnegie Annex to, ah, whatever else is out there. So at least I'm not ignorant when somebody either asks me or I'm listening to somebody's idea about a public-private partnership. Specifically in the context, in the context of the opportunity zone, but not solely.
Okay.
But here's the second question. You made reference to conflicts of interest. So we ought to be clear on what constitutes a conflict of interest or not. There's not, I don't think there's anybody on this council that's gonna have a financial interest in whatever the way Home does. There's no, there's no private benefits that are gonna accrue to anybody. Personally, I don't want to, I don't, as much as I appreciate all the input we get from staff. If somebody said to me, I'm gonna be limited by what I, to what I'm told, as opposed to what I can learn. I'm gonna say, really? I'm not gonna be bridled that way. I'm gonna show up, I'm gonna learn everything I can, include everything I can learn from the staff. But I'm not gonna limit my learning and my perspective to what I sit in, 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 told by somebody else. That's why I show up. In my, I've learned a ton. And I've learned it from developers, I've learned it from homeless advocates, I've, not just on, I mean, on the, on our affordable housing initiative. Listening, I think, well, to a broad range of perspectives. I'm not gonna stop doing that. So clarity, when, when I'm close to a line on what is, is not, is or is not a conflict of interest, is gonna be important to know. So that's a question for Eugene, but I, I just wanna make, I just wanna declare, I am.
It's different depending on what it is, to answer your question. So if it's a legislative act, you don't necessarily have, and so now I'm playing lawyer. If it's a legislative act, you have more flexibility. It's when you get into the land development issues and it falls into the quasi-judicial world. That the limitations start coming in via state law on that one. And you will see as occasionally when we say, this is a quasi-judicial matter, you need to limit contact with, with the applicants and.
So to give a fair hearing.
Right, and so.
I get that.
And, and that was what kind of pinged in my mind when then I saw everything.
And I've been in that conversation with, from river advocates to developers to say, you know what? I'm gonna come at these with an open mind and I, you know, I wanna get smart about it.
Right.
Uh, but I'm gonna give a fair hearing and I wanna do that objectively as I can.
And, and I think, and, and so for example, I think that if somebody has a, I don't think anybody here has a financial interest in a homeless shelter, to be clear. Big bucks, big bucks in the homeless. But, so, but I think that if, like, like, and Joan, I'm not even gonna ask, because quite frankly, it's none of our business. Like, for example, I sit on a group called the Thorn Nature Experience. I'm on their board, right?
That's where I sit with my son.
And, and so if, if they were to show up and, uh, uh, I said, for example, I, I, they were like, oh, we need a facility, you know, we'd love a part-time. I said, hey, why don't you contact the city manager and ask if you can use that old, uh, you know, a couple of days a month? The, uh, the Sandstone Visitor Center, just sits there, you know? If they showed up and we had to take a vote on it, I would A, disclose. And if people felt uncomfortable with me sitting on and taking a vote, I would recuse myself, right? And so, and I, I've recused people, I've recused myself a handful of times. I'm not allowed as a lawyer to say who my clients are. I've left the room, because I'm like, I, I've gotten money from these people. And I don't want them to think that they can, not you guys, but I don't want them to think that I can be in their pocket. So I think that if, like, for example, Joan, if you sat on the board of, uh, is it a way home?
Yeah, there is a board.
That might be a conflict that you don't necessarily have to recuse yourself. You just mention and then we talked about it. Or if, uh, or if it's a quasi-judicial zoning issue. And, and we have involved ourselves to an extent where that becomes an issue, then we disclose it, recuse ourselves. So in the spirit of me committing, even when I'm not for an issue, but making sure that the majority of council understands, well, how do we need to move forward to accomplish your goals? Just be mindful, right? Let's just assume that the four, the four people who were there want a homeless shelter or even want it there. No, I know you don't. But be careful that we don't find ourselves in a situation where.
That's true.
You, you get, if we don't, we can't make a decision, you know? It would, if Bonnie, me and Aaron, even if we were wanting to vote for a homeless shelter, if we don't have a quorum. In one of those quasi-judicial.
Right, it's gonna happen.
We, we couldn't vote for it.
Exactly.
So just all things to be mindful of. And again, as a result of this discussion taking place, we get to have a discussion. And hopefully people are feeling what I'm feeling, which is no blame. I think Bonnie wants to be involved in anything happening in Ward Three on this topic.
Let's be clear about that.
Okay, I'm pretty, I get it. And, uh, that's it. So, any, any other issues? Do we need a group hug? Do we need, Bonnie, would you like to do a trust fall?
No.
No trust fall?
No.
Alright, well, we're not quite there yet. Anything else on this issue?
No.